Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did.
It's time.
It's time.
Justin's ready to go.
All right.
Recording in progress.
Y'all ready? All right, we've got seven o'clock. We'll call the regular meeting of the common council to order. Roll call, please.
David.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
Todd Kirking.
Here.
Tanya will be running a little late. Todd Spade.
Here.
Cindy.
Here.
John.
Here.
Crystal.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
And Justin.
Here. Pledge of allegiance. All right, item number two, approval of the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three regular council minutes.
This is Crystal. I'll move approval of the minutes from October, November twenty eighth, common council.
This is Todd. I'll second that.
I've got a motion in a second. Any questions or corrections? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item number three, council announcements. Any members of the council have any announcements? No? All right, item number four, first period for public comment. Any members of the public present or online wish to make a public comment? Now would be the time. Nobody in house? Anybody online, Nate?
Um, looks like we have one person who unmuted their line. Does anybody online want to make a public comment at this time? I think you're good, man.
All right. Item number five, review and approval of extraterritorial certified survey map for Gary Stuland, and this is coming out of plan commission.
Okay, this went to a plan commission. This is an extraterritorial within that mile and a half radius of the city. Um, this was sent with their approval. It is basically just taking a larger portion and pulling um, some small acreage out of there. There's a house on the one smaller acreage. So again, this was passed by plan commission and forwarded with their approval. I'm looking for your approval.
Cindy, make a motion. We approve the extraterritorial certified survey map.
Day J, I'll second that.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you. Um, item number six is review and approval of certified survey mag for map for Patricia Rue, and this also came out of planning commission.
Okay, this one is within the city. Um, you have the map on there if you want to pull that up. Um, what they're doing is they're dividing that into two lots. Um, outlet one is a pole shed that has an easement access throughout the driveway to the house to the west. And most likely that shed will be sold to a bordering neighbor. So, um, the other thing that they did was they moved, um, on the GIS, the it looks as though the the house on that parcel was going through that, so they kind of cleaned that up on the other side. So this went to plan commission. They approved it and has forwarded it with, I'm looking for your approval as well.
Todd, I approve this certified survey map for Patricia Rue.
Steve, all second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number seven, twenty twenty-two audit presentation of Johnson and Block and Associates.
Okay, folks, uh, Kim Hahneman from Johnson and Block is online with us tonight. Kim, thanks for being here. Um, I will go ahead and take down my share screen if you want to go ahead and put yours up and then, um, once we get that running, I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to you. Okay, Kim, everybody can see your screen. You're good to go.
Can you hear me okay too?
Yep, we can hear you great.
Okay. All right. Oh, we've completed our audit for the city for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, we issued a normal unmodified opinion. That's a clean audit opinion. Uh, the scope of our audit included all funds and activities of the city. Uh, we also prepared and filed regulatory report with the Public Service Commission and the Department of Revenue. Um, and then a separate audit communication document was signed. Um, be read in conjunction with the audit report. So just a few internal control matters to bring up right away. Um, Yasby ninety-six, which is Sabida, such as software-based information technology arrangements goes into effect for twenty twenty-three. Um, there was a lease standard that went into effect for twenty twenty-two, and it's basically the same idea. So we'll have to gather those types of agreements for the upcoming audit. Um, uh, account reconciliations, we recommend reconciling all balance sheet accounts on a monthly basis so that the board is able to make informed decisions. Uh, custodial credit risk. There were balances at some of the local financial institutions that exceeded FDIC insurance limits. So we just recommend either obtaining collateral or some additional insurance when those balances are higher than FDIC limits. Um, WRS payroll liability, um, same as kind of account reconciliations, um, just reconcile that monthly. Um, and then the material weaknesses, um, segregation of duties. This is a continuation from previous years. Um, it's normal for an entity of your size. Um, there are some duties you could probably switch around to maybe get that down to like a significant deficiency, um, something we can talk about. Um, but also just know that the board needs to be more involved when you have that risk. Uh, material audit adjustments, um, I'll, I guess the only thing I was gonna mention there is doing all those monthly reconciliations that'll help get those audit adjustments down. Um, prior period adjustments, this was a one-time thing. It was to move the debt proceeds from uh, the general fund of ten, six, and seven, I think from last year, twenty twenty-one. Um, so that's all we have there. On page four is the income statement for the governmental funds. So mostly your general fund, but also your TIF, debt service, um, grants and library funds. So your general fund had revenues of four point eight million, expenditures expenditures of six point two million, um, other financing sources of one point six million for an increase of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, and an ending fund balance of six hundred and two thousand.
Hey, Kim, can you go ahead and do us a favor and just zoom in?
Yeah.
For us.
I never know how much I can zoom in without cutting it off, but.
Maybe just one more notch up. Perfect, thanks.
Okay. Okay, and the TIF districts, um, had total revenues of seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, expenditures of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, other financing uses of nineteen thousand. Um, so an increase of one hundred and seventy-five thousand and an ending balance of two hundred and ten thousand. The debt service fund had revenue of eight hundred and ten thousand, expenditures of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, and a transfer out of fourteen thousand. And then your non-major funds is the grants and library. So they had revenue of twenty-five thousand, expenditures of eighteen thousand for an increase of seven thousand, and an ending balance of five hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, so overall, your fund balance was one point four million compared to the one million the year before.
Kim.
Yep.
Could, uh, just one point of clarification on the non-major funds. The, the library is, uh, in its entirety is over as part of the general fund. I think, Kim, what you were speaking of in the non-major funds is a, a, a small library grant fund that they have set up for. Maybe Trina can help us out some sort of projects, um, and things like that, but the library, um, wages, staff, utilities, all that stuff is part of the general fund. Um, and then my question to you, Kim, is maybe you can expound upon the prior year period adjustment that nine hundred and five thousand dollars that was moved from the general fund, um, in twenty twenty-two over to the TIF fund, um, because that obviously changes what the fund balance looks like quite a bit on the general fund side. Can you just explain how that came about?
Yeah, I guess I, that happened when I was out, so Melanie was kind of involved in it, but I think, um, there was just a mix up with how the debt proceeds were recorded originally. Everything was recorded on the general fund. So that entry is just moving the TIF portion to those funds.
And, and that was, uh, uh, I guess we can call it a mistake that was made in twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Corrected at the beginning of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was caught mid-year twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Yeah, it was, it was caught whenever we got it, but it was in twenty twenty-two, but the mistake had happened in twenty-one, so.
Correct.
If you look through, if you look through any of the statements that are on here, that nine hundred and five thousand dollars comes up quite a bit and changes the final number. So I just thought it was important for us to kind of talk about that. So, thanks, Kim. And of course, if the council has any questions as we go through this for myself or Kim, um, especially Kim while we have her here, uh, please, please speak up.
Okay, um, the next page is the budget actual for the general fund. See where I can get, as you can see everything. So the second column is the final budget, so that's what I'm looking at. Um, so you budgeted four point three million in revenue, and you actually had four point eight million, so a positive variance of four hundred and forty. Oops, sorry, I'm scrolling down too far. Okay, there we go. Positive variance of four hundred and forty-eight thousand. And expenditures, you budgeted four point seven million and had six point two million, so an unfavorable favorable variance of one point five million. Um, a lot about capital outlay that maybe wasn't, um, planned for. And then, other financing sources and uses, you budgeted three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, you actually had one point six million. Um, so a positive variance of one point million. And then you can see that nine hundred and five thousand again, and then overall, uh, an unfavorable variance of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand.
So, Kim, I don't know if you want a break, but I can, i- if the council would like, I can, we can just kind of scroll back, back up there and talk about some of the variances on the expense side. Cindy, you look like you have a question, so.
Uh, yes, did we get this? This book or did it come online?
I sent it out separately from the first one, so it would have been sent out probably on Monday.
Okay, I'll check for it. Thank you.
So, um, real quick, and, and I can help walk through this. I, I, on the revenue side, we're looking pretty great. Um, there's a lot of things that have happened in that particular section that will help offset what we see as increases or in unfavorable variances on the expense side. On the general government side, just a, a couple notes, um, there's a three particular GLs that are really driving that to look like that. One is the airport's fuel revenue, which had a variance of what, um, almost, was it sixty-three thousand dollars, right? So they spent sixty-three thousand dollars more on fuel than what we had budgeted for, but they also brought in sixty-eight thousand more in fuel revenue. Okay, so that's a key one. Another one is the insurance refunds. That's, you'll see thirty-two thousand dollars in expenses. We never budget for insurance refunds because we hope we don't have them, and how can you budget for accidents, right? But there's thirty-three thousand dollars in insurance reimbursement. So again, that's, uh, and not zero. And then the room tax is another large one. There's approximately thirteen thousand dollars in that general government fund above what we budgeted for, but the room tax actually brought in ninety thousand more in revenue than what we had budgeted for. Now, seventy thousand of that additional surplus is gonna go back to the tourism commission because it has to, and Lori, you've probably already sent that money in twenty twenty-three. Um, but those are three large numbers in terms of general government about why that's higher. Uh, another of the couple of things is um, insurance, um, property liability, we just misbudgeted. That was a fourteen thousand dollar difference, and that covers the entire city. So workers' comp, property and liability insurance, vehicles, things like that. Utilities, um, were over. Um, we were carrying two buildings all year long on the city side and, and rates, and you'll see this kind of across the city have gone up. And then finally, legal fees. Um, we went through the public hearing last year with the police department and things like that, and that was, as we talked about in that year, just a very expensive unbudgeted thing. Okay, and that was approximately sixty-two thousand dollars. Okay? So all those things collectively is what has led to that number being really high, but when you take out the offsetting revenues, the additional offsetting revenues, you're talking somewhere in the range of fifty-six to sixty thousand dollars net impact, and that's net impact to the red, not the black. So that's a negative net impact. So while it's not great, it's certainly not a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars not great. Okay? On the public safety side, um, the majority of the variance there was in our police department. Um, the largest amount was due to the assistant chief retiring. So Todd Simonson retired that year, and with him, there was a significant payout of his accrued vacation and sick time. Um, somewhere in the range of around sixty-two thousand dollars. Actually, it's probably closer to forty-two. Um, and then, um, on top of that, the external investigator that was hired as part of that public hearing in twenty twenty-two also came out of the police department, came out of pub, um, admin, as well as any reimbursables, came out of their discretionary budget. So that's really inflating that as well. Um, and that's probably to the tune of also around forty thousand dollars. Um, and then on top of that, the biggest one that I, I quite don't have all the answers for, but there was about forty thousand dollars in what I'll call the discretionary spending um, categories that were just overages. Um, I think some of the things that were noted were things like utilities, the phone system was more expensive than what we had bu- budgeted for. Um, some building maintenance, I think, happened. The purchase of maybe archive social was in there, um, and as well as some of the different software systems that the chief has spoken about over the year. So those are, um, unfortunately, don't have a lot of offsetting revenues to go along with them, so that, um, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars is kind of just what it is. Okay, but again, some of it was, uh, I would say a good chunk of it was due to the assistant chief retiring, which, you know, if you think about it, you get the benefit of not paying out any sick time, or shouldn't say that, paying out very little sick time and the vacation, all that stuff you accrued. He earned that, and so he just, when you take it in a year, that's when we feel it versus all the other years he provided service to the community, you don't feel it then. Okay? Questions? All right, uh, the forty-two thousand on the public works, um, for the most part, that department did really solid. Um, there was, uh, a good balance among, uh, what I'll call the discretionary funds, right? Uh, street lighting, storm sewers, curb gutters, street cleaning, garage, gasoline was tough. It was a fuel, fueling utilities for them was just as hard as it was for everybody else. So there were some overages there. Um, the biggest things that we saw there was, one is, is waste collection. So for whatever reason, and Kim, I don't know if you can help me out with this, and I apologize for springing this on you, but there was the waste collection, which is our contract with GFL or Southwest Sanitation at the point, was forty thousand over budget. Well, when I looked through the detailed ledger that showed how that amount was calculated, there were thirteen payments. So one per month, and so there's an extra twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollar payment in there. And I'm guessing it was either one from twenty twenty-one that hadn't been pushed back, or more likely, maybe there's one for twenty twenty-three that. So one way or another, there's an extra twenty-three thousand dollar payment for that year that shouldn't be there, and I don't know how we want to go about fixing that, Kim, or if what's done is done, but just something to make note of.
Yeah, I mean, if it was twenty twenty-three, you know, we could probably do something, but it would be another prior period adjustment I would have to make. So I don't know if that's worth it to you guys, but we, okay, we can discuss.
I, I think as long as we're not double paying a bill and that it evens out over the course of one or two years. That's what's important, but that's the biggest reason there. And then, once you take that out on the, um, garbage contractual side, there was actually another twelve to thirteen thousand in revenue we brought in from the billing that we do to the customers, and so that, um, waste and recycling even isn't, doesn't quite even out, but it's much closer than being forty thousand dollars over, right? Other things in the public works, and probably the biggest thing is the sidewalks. Um, we did our, I believe, our last round of sidewalk corrections, and so there is, we don't budget for all the expenses we incur for when the public incurs costs for repairing their sidewalk. We budget for what we know the city is responsible for in front of our buildings and public right, you know, public properties and things like that. So that was, um, considerably over. That was sixty-six thousand, sixty-seven thousand over budget because we just don't budget, and that sixty-seven thousand that was over is then repaid to the city over the course of multiple years of special assessments. So, um, overall, when you look at it, again, it looks forty-two thousand, doesn't look great, but it's actually, um, a very good performance from the department. Um, health and social services, the first thing I'll point out is a hundred and sixty-four of those dollars are actually um, the cemetery. The cemetery makes expenses, and so Kim can show you another, maybe another page here that shows that there's actually within the general fund is embedded a smaller fund called the cemetery fund, and so they have a whole slew of additional revenues and expenses that help them balance out. Kim, I don't know if you want to pull that up real quick.
Um, I don't have it in this presentation, so I.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I don't, I guess I don't think.
No, I can, I think I can just rattle it off here, but, um, you know, ultimately, the, the cemetery ended up being seventy thousand dollars over budget be, or net difference before other financing sources came into play, so they ended up being a net change to their fund balance of about five thousand dollars, but, um, part of what you see when you look at that last number, and sorry, Kim, I don't mean to make you jump around. You can go back, though.
Right, I didn't, I didn't mean to scroll.
Uh, that a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars looks pretty bad, but a, a, again, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, four sixty-nine was actually a cemetery fund expense that we don't put in our general fund budget, right? So that's why it's gonna look worse, but they have, if you look, um, above that in their revenues, they have, uh, they add revenues in public charges for service and interest in miscellaneous revenues to the tune of almost a hundred thousand dollars. So that's when it gets a little tough reading through all these statements is because depending on what page you're looking at, it's gonna include or disinclude certain, certain funds. Okay? Um, and the cemetery fund is always, to me at least, a little bit of the biggest learning curve when it comes to reading these things, because in some places it's just added, and in some places it's separated out. Um, culture wreck and development. This is another, one of those things where I have to learn how the auditors do things, and maybe, Kim, you can help me out with this. It looks like we're forty-four thousand dollars under budget in that category. See that forty-three, nine hundred? But for whatever reason, the, um, payment we make, uh, from the cemetery perpetual fund to the cemetery is not included as, as that, that actual number, so that seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven oh three, there's another, what, sixty? Sixty-five thousand, one fifty-five that the city pays up to the cemetery annually to help with the function of the cemetery, and for whatever reason, that's just not included, which is why it's so skewed to the positive. Based on my numbers, when you disclude the cemetery fund, the, uh, cultural wreck and development is um, I think back then. Was over budget by a fairly significant amount. Hang on, I'm sorry. Probably close to seventeen thousand. Is that what you're saying, Crystal? Either way, the biggest things there to make note of um, where we were over budget, um, on the park side due, due to overspending on recreation other. I don't really have a lot of explanation there. When I look back at the notes, when we looked at this at the end of twenty twenty-two, so in December of twenty twenty-two, it was tracking to be about two thousand dollars over budget, but ended up being, um, around seventy-five hundred dollars over budget. Um, the other, another item in there is, there was ten thousand dollars over in park rec maintenance, but that was offset by grants. So they had gotten grant funds to support some work in the park. That's showing up on revenue, but it's gonna make our, um, oop, I think I lost Kim. Kim, did we lose you?
Nope, I'm here.
Oh, sorry, I just accidentally moved something off the screen. Um, and then finally, the capital outlay, um, the biggest, there's, there's two items, uh, shown in there. Um, I, I should take that back. The big items, um, on there are gonna be our purchase of two squad cars, um, fire chief's vehicle we bought that year. City Hall, there was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars spent on, when we were paying the pay request for City Hall. Um, public works, there was seal coating, um, repaving of Arena Drive, and then, um, the purchase of a public works truck. Okay. Library, there was a little bit for grant revenue, but then we also replaced the parking rec truck, because if you remember, that's when the bottom of Boone's vehicle was all rusted out and, and, um, was showing signs of imminent failure. But all that, um, that is showing up there in terms of capital outlay, that one million dollars, the reason it's over is because we just, we don't, we didn't budget for City Hall because whatever came in from City Hall was immediately evened out through, um, a draw from Royal Bank, um, through our interim financing, and that's all gonna be reflected on the revenue side. So at the end of the day, um, there were certainly some misses on the expense side, but it's certainly not nearly as dark of a picture as you would look at when you look at this screen alone. So I'm happy to answer any questions to that, but hopefully that additional deep dive provides some amount of reassurance that, um, we're not talking millions and hundreds of a thousand dollars missing budget. It's in some ways, the way the statements are put together, and in some ways, um, some, in, in other ways, we did incur some unexpected expenses. All right, Kim. Hi. Oh, Crystal has something?
I just had a question. I know one of the recommendations that they made is that we balance a lot of the accounts more monthly. If we do that, would those things be caught sooner?
Um, I think what Kim is talking about is more reconciliation, but maybe what you're asking about is more frequent monitoring of the expenses going out the door. Um, part of what we do is we talk about this at finance every two weeks. Um, and part of what we've done and been more steadfast about doing is doing the quarterly reports.
Yep.
And having all the department heads look at their budgets, comparing it to actuals year-to-date, and making sure they're identifying mistakes that maybe have happened, things getting in the wrong GLs, but also if there's any areas where they're trending above their budget. Right? And, um, a great example is the recreation other budget. I can't recall if there was a good reason why that item went out of budget. It may have just been overspending and not realizing you, they were well past their budget before they were well past their budget. But that's accountability every department head should have, and then Lori and I's job is both the treasurer and the city administrator to hold them accountable for staying underneath budget. So anything you want to add to that, Lori?
And she's talking about reconciliations. She's talking about the balance sheet accounts, which is like the payroll, those liabilities, those kind of things, making sure that that, what comes in goes out if it's a payroll related thing. So that is an area that we hope to get better at. It's with this transferring of people and personnel or whatever. Some of that stuff has fallen behind, but we're hoping to catch that up, so.
And, and one thing I will say is that I've seen a lot of progress with our staff team over both budgeting and monthly financials. The The department heads are taking a far more active role grading their budgets than before I got here. It's been a slow and steady progress and you, I think they're all getting far more comfortable with understanding how the numbers are created. And then by doing the quarterly reports, they're having, they're looking at them more and, and you know, um very capable. And I've been really being impressed with, with what they, their responses and how deep some of them dig into stuff and try to find wherever the overage is coming from and why it's happening. And so we'll continue to get better. Um, but sometime, I think last year was a good example, we're just going to run into expenses that we have heard that we just didn't budget for. And there's no way to absorb a sixty-three or an eighty-three thousand dollar hit on some of those items without losing a major, you know, you're not talking about trimming fingernails, you're talking about cutting off your arm in the middle of the year and just can't do that. Kim, thank you for allowing me that inner loop just to explain that. Uh, why don't you go ahead and continue?
Okay. Um, this next page is a breakdown of the fund balance. Um, let's see. Oops. Okay. So this graph is a little bit skewed because there's a good chunk of unassigned fund balance that was a deficit at the end of the year. So if you, if I scroll down here, you can see this unassigned deficit of one million. So this chart up here is just taking the positive numbers. So it's not a great representation, but I'll just kind of go over it quick and then if you have questions, just let me know. Um, so your non-spendable, non-spendable fund balance was a hundred and twenty-three thousand or about five percent of your positive fund balance. Restricted fund balance was one point seven million or about seventy percent of your positive fund balance. And then assigned fund balance was six hundred and twenty-five thousand or twenty-five thousand of your positive fund balance. Excuse me. And then down here is that um deficit of one million. A large chunk of that is your TIF districts that will be affected in the future. Um, the next page is your, a breakdown of your revenues. So fifty-six percent came from taxes and special assessments, thirty-two percent intergovernmental, two percent miscellaneous, eight percent public charges for services, two percent penalties and forfeitures, and about thirteen thousand from interest income. Um, and then there's a couple, a couple of notes down below. Um, your most significant intergovernmental revenues are your highway aids of three hundred and twenty-one thousand and your shared taxes of one point one million. And then page eight is a breakdown of your expenditures. So fourteen percent, let's see. Okay. Fourteen percent with the culture, recreation and development. Fourteen percent to debt service, twenty-one percent public safety, sixteen percent public works, thirteen percent general government, seventeen percent capital outlay, and five percent health and social services.
So just for everybody's now, is the culture, recreation, development includes the parks, recreation, of course, um, but that's also where you'll find the library. So if anybody was wondering, where's the library at all this, they go under culture, recreation, development. They're probably the culture.
I think that also includes your TIF expenditures too. Does that sound right?
The what expenditures?
Your TIF.
Um, I, I mean, there was certainly a good chunk of TIF that came that comes out of uh that, you know, when we redid the parks, there were some TIF expenditures there. But I I don't. Yeah, Kim, you're correct.
Yeah, it's about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand was TIF.
But that's not always where it comes out of.
Um, I mean, that's typically where we have it grouped, I guess.
Oh, interesting. Okay. I just thought it would be recognized under the TIF fund across whatever category it happened to be serving in that year. But if that's where you guys typically put it, that's good to know.
A lot of that's because of the development agreements, probably.
Okay. And then page nine is just a chart showing um those different categories and expenditures and how they fluctuated over the last five years. Um, so the biggest fluctuations are always like your capital outlay is that blue line with the star um that fluctuates dependent on your projects you do in the year. Um, and then that um, the green line with those um, triangle is your culture, recreation and development that we talked about. So that does include like the TIF districts, any library projects or park projects. You guys have had a lot of those type of projects going on. Um, most of the rest will stay the same. Um, debt service just changes dependent on when your loans are due. Um, down below has like actual numbers for those last five years, if you want to look at them at all. And then page ten is the income statement for all the TIF districts. I'm not going to go into too much detail on all of these, but um I'll just point out a couple of things. Um, just that same frame period adjustment down below there, that nine hundred and five thousand, so you can see how much hit if six versus TIF seven. Um.
So, Kim, what?
Yep.
I was, uh, make an additional information there. Those expenses that she just pointed out, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars under six and then three thirty-five under seven, those are um, I believe, it corrected from wrong, Kim, is when we refinanced those outstanding loans in twenty twenty-one. So we had um a loan we had taken out, I think it was for two thousand and sixteen, Lori. And then another one when we um rolled our contribution in the Vroko Business Park, that three hundred and thirty thousand, we refinanced them because we saw some really solid, really better interest rates in twenty twenty-one coming out of the pandemic or starting to come out of pandemic. And so those are what those expenses are. If anybody's wondering, like, what do we, what do we do that incur those costs? And so I think that's probably why that prior adjustment period happened is we got to the end of the twenty twenty-one, realized we wanted to refinance. They paid off the existing loans, the existing principal from like two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and nineteen that were out there. And then we forgot to allocate the long-term debt proceeds from the refinance loan back to those TIPS. That's, that's where I'm thinking that happens. And if that tracks with you, Kim, I think we're probably feeling pretty good about that.
Yeah, that sounds right. Um, yeah, the other things I was pointing out have two closed, so that's that first column. And then um the only one that had a deficit at the end of the year was TIF four. Um. Yeah, I think that was it. Okay. And then just a little more information on your TIPS up above is your, the equalized values as of the end of the year or as of twenty twenty-two, I'd say. Um, and then all the termination dates of your TIPS. Um, so I guess the only one to really note, TIP three is terminated in twenty twenty-five, unless you guys have any sort of extensions there. Um, and then just another note, interfund payables and advances of eight hundred and thirty thousand for TID four and three hundred and ninety-nine thousand for six have been recorded in the water and sewer utilities. Okay. And then jumping into your utilities. You see that okay now that I have zoomed out before? Do you have to zoom in a little more?
No, you're okay, Kim.
Okay. So your water utility had operating revenue of one point two million, operating expenses of eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, non-operating expense of sixty thousand, capital contribution of two thousand, transfer out to the general fund of two hundred and thirty-one thousand for an increase of eighty-one thousand and an ending net position of eight point seven million. Your sewer utility had operating revenues of one point five million, operating expenses of one point four million, non-operating expenses of one hundred and seventy-four thousand um for a decrease of one hundred and seven thousand and an ending net position of nine point three million. And then your golf course had operating revenues of five hundred and two thousand, expenses of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, um, non-operating expenses of sixteen thousand for an increase of twenty-one thousand and an ending net position of five hundred and twenty-four thousand. So overall, your utilities had an ending net position of eighteen point five million. And then the last page um just shows all the long-term obligations. So for your governmental activities, um, you have notes, bonds, a land contract, a premium discount, super bonds and compensated absences. So you had a beginning balance of eleven point five million, increases of one point three million, payments of nine hundred thousand for an ending balance of twelve million, of which two point nine million was due in twenty twenty-three. And then for your utilities, and then you had notes, bonds, premium, discount and compensated absences. There you had a beginning balance of fourteen point nine million, increases of three point two million, payments of three point five million for an ending balance of fourteen point six million, of which one point one million was due in twenty twenty-three. And then at the bottom, it talks about your debt limit. So your debt limit for twenty twenty-two was nineteen point four million. You had ten point three billion subject to that limit. So you had about eight point eight million remaining to borrow or about forty-six percent. That's all I have. Do you have other questions for me?
Doesn't look like it. No other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. Have a good night.
Thanks, Kim.
You too. Thanks.
Hmm, right. Yeah. I'm tracking here. All right. Item number eight is discussion and possible action regarding Hanson Farm Master Plan. Okay, folks, it looks like Kurt Mukow from Beer Becker has joined us. Kurt, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Sure can. I gave you control to share screen. If you want to go ahead and put your document up on the screen and sort of walk us through it and we'll kind of switch gears from picture, from numbers to pictures.
Pictures. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, you can see it okay, I assume?
Yeah, it looks great, Kurt.
Okay, um, if I counted right, this is the eleventh public meeting in which we reviewed the Hanson Property Development Plan and the um ultimate uh uh plan that we ended up with looks much different than what we started with. And it, and I got to say, it's been a, a really good process of uh throwing out ideas, getting feedback, updating things. And uh uh, we ended up with what we have here tonight. Uh, just as a reminder, um, this concept plan is simply a tool to uh help illustrate to potential developers what the city's vision is for the property. And as you go through the process of actually uh uh recruiting developers and, and so forth, um, it, it, it undoubtedly will change a little bit through that process, but this is uh um, wha- what, what you're looking at is what's been developed is, is kind of the city's uh uh vision for the property. Just some big picture items, uh, the um Main Street, uh Highway fourteen is on the right side. Uh, we're proposing the uh new uh east-west street along the north part of the Hanson property. And the intersection with Main Street is purposely located right at the driveway for Walmart. Um, and it's proposed that in the future, there would be traffic signals and that would address uh the current traffic uh uh concerns there. And as we add more traffic to it, it would make a safe intersection. We're showing the street going due east and west. The actual property line to the Hanson property is north a little bit from there. Um, we are showing this open drainage ditch. If you remember, uh, north of here a little bit, there's a big culvert under Main Street and that water goes diagonally across the Hanson property. We're kind of rerouting that uh north of the east-west street and then south um through the development down to the stormwater basin and in the southwest corner. As this layout gets refined, uh, this portion of the street could perhaps be pushed north. It doesn't necessarily have to be straight east and west so that, you know, we um utilize that property a little bit better. But uh anyways, this is uh uh, for purposes of this, we're showing it straight through. Um, the other uh big picture item, remember on the south, just south of the development is the landfill. And so at the recommendation of uh DNR, uh, they're suggesting uh no development with basements and so forth, just as a precaution. There is no contamination, but as a precaution, so it'd be slab on grade construction. Um, one of the um um, the land use fronting Highway fourteen is all commercial. Everything behind the highway commercial is all residential. Uh, some of the big changes from where we started with is uh um, the barn and the silo is now uh uh recommended to be preserved and incorporated into a new commercial uh development uh fronting Main Street. Uh, we envision the theme of that uh development would be like a farmstead uh commercial lot. The, I mean, we're showing some new commercial buildings on there. The idea would be they could be uh architecturally designed uh uh as a farm uh theme. And uh um, there's a lot of really cool things that could uh come out of that. The suggestion of, of preserving the barn and the silo was kind of to pay tribute to the uh strong agricultural heritage. And uh, uh, I think it's a really uh cool idea. Um, south of the farmstead commercial lot between and north of Culvers is kind of a conventional uh highway commercial. Uh, we're showing a single access onto Main Street. Uh, if you remember, there was concern for traffic reasons to not have a lot of new driveways. And so we're showing one and that one would serve the, both the farmstead and this commercial parcel. Uh, one other change from what you've seen before is this uh at the intersection up here in the northeast corner, we're showing a couple of commercial properties. Both would be access off of the new road with parking here, good visibility to the highway, but just a little bit different uh configuration. Um, behind the commercial, then the rest is uh our residential and park. And one of the comments that we received, if, you know, our initial plans were really high density multifamily and that really uh was not um consistent with what the city was looking for. You're looking for more of a variety of housing choices. And so what we've attempted to do is uh uh do that. On, on the west end, we're showing residential uh, or I'm sorry, uh duplex uh units, uh twelve of them. So there'd be uh, twelve of them. So there'd be twenty-four units. They're all fronting on public streets, so they could be owner occupied as like zero lot line zoning. So you could buy a half of a duplex. And that's really popular right now. It's a very cost-effective, uh, housing choice. And in a lot of communities, uh, you can't hardly build them fast enough. And so we made that change to make this more lower density. Uh, to the east of that, we're showing, uh, row houses. Um, that's something, um, um, probably new to Baroque. Um, yeah, row house is simply, uh, a multi-story, uh, like a townhouse. You would have, uh, garages, uh, at, at the first level, the main living floor would be the second level, uh, type of thing, and perhaps with a loft. If the, uh, row houses, uh, wasn't the, the preferred choice, these could easily be converted to, uh, duplexes or fourplexes, uh, something like that. So there's quite a bit of flexibility there. Uh, we're showing some couple of twelve-unit multifamily buildings on the south side and then just, uh, some four units and row houses here on the north side. So uh, quite interchangeable, the way it lays out, they can, um, um, switch in different types of, uh, housing units. The other thing we did is incorporated a public park and we put it right behind the farmstead, uh, commercial, uh, parcel with kind of a connecting pedestrian, uh, connection. Thinking that the barn and, and so forth could possibly be used as an event center and, and so forth. And so having the park and, and this tied together could, uh, um, create some pretty unique uh, uses for this space tying the neighborhood, uh, park into, uh, uh, that commercial. And, uh, we're showing a quite a bit of parking up here. Uh, uh, much more than just what these commercial buildings would need. The thinking would be if this were an event center plus the public park needs, uh, parking, this would be kind of public, uh, parking area. And the, the other thing I would comment on is the location of this public road coming off of Chicago through the duplexes. We kind of purposely lined up to the barn. So when you're coming into the development off of Chicago, you're looking through the park right at the barn and silo. So it kind of, uh, captures that, uh, egg, uh, feeling and brings it into the neighborhood a little bit. Um, the other thing I would comment on is this street and this street are proposed as public streets as well as this street. Uh, all the rest of the asphalt you see in here would be private, uh, drives. The purpose of the public streets here is, uh, number one, it provides access to the public park. But, uh, it allows any, uh, it allows this twenty-two acres or all of this residential development to be subdivided and perhaps made available to different developers. So one developer might want to develop the duplexes here. Another developer might want to purchase, uh, property up down here and another developer, developer up there. And by having, you know, these separate parcels need to have access to a public street and this layout kind of uh, accommodates that. And, and I, my guess would be, uh, um, well, you, you might find one developer that would want to do all of this. Chances are you'd probably have a better luck, um, uh, making parcels available to, to multiple developers and that kind of accommodates that. Um, so that's a quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions or Nate, if I omitted anything.
No, that was great, Kurt. I appreciate it. Um, I think the only thing I'll add is essential consideration we had here is phasing. Uh, Kurt, I don't think you touched on that a bunch, but
Yep.
Whenever we're talking about infrastructure, I think last time this group looked at it, the infrastructure costs on this project are are high, right? Especially when you're talking about that intersection at, uh, at Walmart and then, you know, roads, water, sewer, going through that, that's, that's expensive. And so what's important for us to do to make this work is make sure we can try to develop those parts of the property that require the least amount of upfront infrastructure. Um, get those in, have them start generating tid revenue, and then we can use the revenue from those established projects to help fill in the stuff in the middle that depend on the public road. So sort of start east and/or west and, and work your way inward. Kurt, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, that's a, a good point. And just to expand on that, the these commercial parcels right here could get access to the sanitary sewer and water on Main Street. And so with, this parcel, this parcel could be developed with very little infrastructure cost. And then, uh, the residential development on the far west side, the sanitary sewer and water to serve this is coming from the south on Chicago Avenue. It has to be extended up Chicago and in this way. And so by starting on the west end here then, um, would require a lot lower infrastructure cost versus if we were starting like in the middle, something like that. And the, the discussion has been, let's try to, uh, defer this expensive intersection and, and, you know, this other uh, infrastructure until we get some cash flow going.
Thank you, Kurt. Questions?
I guess that's what I asked Nate earlier. Is that, is this the plan or or and he explained, no, this is just kind of a concept to get us going, thinking of what is possible. Did I say that correct?
Yeah, exactly. Um, what we'd be also looking for a, at this juncture is any additional feedback or thoughts we have. When last time we were here, you know, I know one of the comments that was made was about, you know, I thought there was maybe going to be more single family and what we, what that I think cricket ticket comment was taken into account. And that's why, as Kurt noted, we tried to provide more diversity and options, um, on this with some options maybe fitting in ownership versus a rental model. Um, but at the same time, it's important to note that we, what we want, I think, as a city, as I've heard, is we need more units. We need more places for young families, young adults starting out to live. Um, and having more density also makes it, um, more financially capable of going and paying for that infrastructure. And so we kind of, and, and Kurt, I don't know if you, you mentioned the number of units.
Um, no, and I, the question, uh, I actually prompted that, um, let me just quick do seventy-four, eighty-four, ninety-six. The, the original high-density residential plans that we started earlier had two hundred and eight housing units. Um, this plan here has ninety-six housing units. Um, it's, it's a lot lower. And, but then when, when you look at the TIF feasibility, the value of these, uh, owner-occupied duplex units are a lot higher than apartment. And so I've done a TIF analysis based on this plan. And, uh, if I remember right, uh, making reasonable assumptions, this, this development at full buildout would generate around sixteen million of, uh, new tax base and, uh, which, uh, is sufficient to cover the cost of the development cost. So it works. Um, and so we always have, as we tweak this plan, as we work with developers, we always have to be mindful of how many housing units are we getting because that's, you know, that's one of the goals, but then also, um, what kind of tax base are we getting?
I, I personally like this a lot better than the other one. And it's a variety. I can see the row houses being single people. You know, own, owning something and, and families in the duplexes and the barn. I really like keeping the barn. You know, this is a nice concept.
Thanks to me. Any other thoughts? No. All right. Well, thank you, Kurt.
Yeah.
Sorry. Are you wanting the council to kind of make a formal motion?
Well, I, I think so. The, the VDA passed a motion recommending this plan and the Plan Commission passed a motion recommending this plan. So I guess it probably would be good if we could have the council, um, accept this as the development plan that we move ahead with, but recognizing it's subject to change.
Um, and, and to add that in terms of next steps, you know, you may be asking yourself, okay, now what? The VDA meets on Thursday. The VDA is going to react to whatever decision is made here. Um, and then it's going to talk about if it's approved, is going to start working on like, okay, what's our marketing plan now? How do we want to start reaching out to developers? Who needs to see this? And then how do we start those conversations of come on in? Let's start talking, right? We've already had, um, some really solid interest. Um, people who've come forth with even plans already. And now it's about, okay, that is matching up. Now we fully, now the VDA knows sort of what the council's looking for. And if somebody came forward and said, I just want to do a bunch of apartment units, the VDA would be able to say like, okay, well, that's great. But the council's looking for maybe more diversity, maybe some ownership model, right? That's, that's what this is about, is helping articulate what your position is back to the VDA so they can find the right match for you guys.
Thank you, Nate.
And I make a motion to accept this plan with, uh, possible changes in the future.
Is it David? I'll second. All right. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Closed? All right. Thanks again, Kurt.
Yeah. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. All right. Item number nine, discussion with possible action on business park farmland agreement with Vernon County.
Okay, this was actually talked about at Public Property last week. Um, the county approached the city, um, with an opportunity for a really solid collaboration. Um, it's on a fairly tight timeline, but we think we have a, um, good plan in place for the council to consider. So the land in question is up on screen here. It's approximately thirteen point three acres of land. That's part of the Baroque Business Park. We leased it out last year, um, or should I say this year, twenty twenty-three to a farmer. And we leased it to the farmer who was already leased in a lease agreement with the county to the east. So the east, or I should say it's called the West Farm, but it's to the east of this picture. And it borders the city's Baroque Business Park. Those thirteen point three acres outlined there are the parts of the Baroque Business Park that could very well be sold for development and we plan to sell them for development. But they also, um, have had the least impact from grading and other construction when we were building the business park. And therefore it's still tillable and we would like to continue to lease it out to a farmer um, while we wait to find a good developer to turn it into whatever its future is. The county approached us and basically asked if we would like to join in with them because they, you had read the papers, seeing in the news, um, were pursuing, um, some more sustainability standards for their farms. Okay. And because our lands are just flow right into one another, would make a lot of sense for whatever they're doing for us to do it, especially when it comes to sustainability practices, because the contour of land doesn't just stop at the red border, right? Um, and anything that you're putting on, they're putting on their land is probably going to trickle over into our land and vice versa. So that's where this came about. Um, I attended their general government committee, um, last week and, uh, they're interested in, in working with us on this. Um, I apologize that this hasn't been sent out up until today. It was, um, in the hands of the legal team and the administrators. Um, but it is, this is basically a nine-page lease agreement that would be essentially how we lease out the land. Um, this lease agreement mirrors what the county is doing so that a bidder could look at theirs and look at ours and say, oh, we know what's going on here. There's some differences between the two of them. But we understand what it says and the goal is, is that we release our, um, we release our leases, we release our documents together as part of one bid process so that the same farmer is leasing both their land and our land and that we get a better price because we can participate in the act, in the competitive bid process instead of having no choice but to enter into a lease agreement with whoever the county chooses. And then when that person gets to us, they know it's either them or nobody and we don't usually get the best price, right? So that's, that's definitely the advantage to us, but I think the other advantage to them is some of, some of the sustainable practices contained herein. Um, and so I'll walk through this briefly, but this is just a, a description of the property, thirteen point three acres. And it references the map I showed you. The terms are going to be, um, for four years, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. Um, the other language there is just right of entry in fairly standard contract language for, uh, an, a lease agreement. No right to sublease, no buildings on the property. Um, if this passes on to anybody in their organization or the heirs, it, it applies to them as well. And then here's some definitions, and this is really where the county, um, is trying to implement these sustainability practices where they're talking about contours and buffer strips, um, respecting grass waterways, respecting trees. And so in the definition section here, you can see that. In the land use section here, this is where it also I really seeks to implement where it talks about best management practices. Um, and it references these NRCS Conservation Practice Standards Codes three thirty and three thirty-two respectively. Talks about soil testing, um, then it has the restrictions, um, no modifications to spraying, plowing, no modifications to spraying, plowing or damaging the prairies, permanent buffers, grass waterways. Um, no interference with an easement rights, including the trail easement or environmental easement that goes through their land. And if any of it goes through our land, it's obviously removed as well. Um, no storage of vehicles, keeping noxious weeds done as best as possible. Um, no improvements, and then it just has more of these conservation practices. And so I'm not an expert in these. I'm sure some of the farmers in the room maybe, but I did ask Ben Wohan from the county, who is, um, a county conservation vist with land and water. Um, and he wrote this on our behalf for tonight. He said, um, contour farming and contour buffer strips is further defined within the document. Um, and the NRCS Conservation Practice Standards Codes three thirty and three thirty-two is the practice of alternating crops with strips of hay on the contour to increase infiltration and reduce soil and phosphorus loss. The practice is the big change that Vernon County agreed to. More recently, the lease has allowed all corn or all soybeans. With this practice requirement, there will be much more hay and protected permanent vegetation on the farm. Um, soil testing and the five ninety nutrient management standard, this is a common requirement for farms. They must soil sample every four years and the soil test get entered into a program called SNAP Plus through UWL Madison. A farmer may either hire a consultant or take a class to Vernon County Land and Water Western Technical College to develop their plan. This plan is properly implemented ensures that soil loss, phosphorus loss and fertilizer applications all meet the state and federal requirements. So I think a little bit of this is, um, I wouldn't say a leap of faith, but it's entrusting that the county, um, has a good plan here and it sounds like they've been talking about it for the better part of this year. And that what we're doing is saying, yep, if you think it's a good idea, if the land and water group thinks it's a good idea and you're excited about this, we can do it with you. And I think, um, what they're also offering here that I have, um, in yellow is that we're going to need them, their help in our farmer following the standard, right? So the plan would be approved by Vernon County Land and Water Department. I wouldn't have to figure it out and approve that plan, right? Um, the nutrient management plan again would be submitted to them and they would make sure because and which is easy because if they have, if we would have the same farmer, they don't have to drop it off to two different places. Um, so I worked on this with Lori and Sarah, and I think Sarah, for the most part, is, um, good with the language. Um, we're going to ask that they make sure their maps identify our easements and our environmental corridor that's coming out of the business park, but that's not really relevant to this lease here. Sarah, if I missed anything, let me know. Um, who else did I talk to about this? Oh, Lori. And from an administrative standpoint, there's really not a heck of a lot of difference here from what we were doing before. The only difference is that they'd be, they'd be paying two installments instead of just one, which is maybe unnecessary, but again, keep them on the same pattern of what the county is doing. After that, it's damages, no recreational use, no warranty or guarantee of use, mutual agreements. Um, again, this is just contract language. We've had George look at it and he's comfortable with it. Um, so we talked about rent payments. Um, land reduction is really the biggest change between us and the county. They allow for a much longer lead time. So if they want to terminate the lease, they give the farmer a much longer time before they take it. We don't have that luxury because our land is out there for immediate development if an option's out there for us. And so we sort of revert this contract back to our, the language that's in our other ag land leases where it's a thirty may notice, and then essentially upon removal, we're paying the farmer a reasonable cost of the inputs put into the land. And those reasonable inputs are, are defined down here where you're talking about, you know, lime, um fuel used to deposit stuff, things like that, so. Um, again, I don't see an issue with it. I, again, it follows our old language fairly well, and then this is just material breach of contract and right of cure. If somebody makes a mistake and doesn't follow the contract, gives them an opportunity to fix their mistake. And then this section here just needs signature blocks, but that's the lease. Um, again, if there's any questions about some of the stuff that I walked through, um, we can go back and look at it, but the big thing is, is those and then water had, had pushed out.
No, I'd just like to say I like the contour plying and the prairie strips and all that stuff is very good. Talking to them, I'm impressed if they did that.
Is this something that county has experienced with previously, or is it a new proposal project?
I can speak a little to that. I, the county is often, has for a long time talked about on their land, you know, that our county conservation departments quite conservation department, they're very involved in a lot of aspects of conservation, and they've often felt that the county farm should be farmed in the manner in which they encourage the residents of the county to farm their ground. And they've tried, and they've had, you know, some efforts over the years, but this is the first time they've gotten to the point where they've gotten it passed to where they can hold a farmer to all of the management practices that they believe in. And so that way, if somebody wants to see something about prairie buffer strips, they can take them right out there and show it to them. Uh, so it's a, it's a neat thing, and you know, I, the way our land connects to it, it certainly makes absolute sense to let them, you know, put that into that production also. So, yeah.
Is, is there any fencing or anything like that right now between the cities and that, that has to be taken over? Okay, good.
Last year, they just planted right through the counties and ours, the same. Actually, I think we got a little behind, so he had actually went back and planted into it, but the same farmer did them both last year and so.
Then I would move, we approve this.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion in a second. Steve?
I was, there's no uh prairie buffer strips currently, though?
No.
All right, so is that something that, do we, we just leave that up to the first, first guy that farms this land then?
It's my understanding, Nate, unless you know different, the county is going to lay out how that farm's going to be planted.
Okay.
And whoever is awarded the, the, the lease will be responsible for putting in the buffer strips, which the county conservation department will come out and mark them.
Sure.
For you and with you.
Making sure we didn't have to do that, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not aware this is going to cost us any, we'll have any expense.
Sarah, I don't know if you want to speak anymore, what's on our land. Um, but this is their overall map, and this kind of better shows grass waterways, um, what's the east and west field, and then they see, you know, and, and a lot of this doesn't involve us. Our portion is, as you can see, the Verroco Business Park to the, in the northwest corner there. But Sarah, anything that we have on our land that would be to Steve's question?
Yeah, um, so yeah, that's accurate. Um, the waterway stuff, which involves our easement a little bit, and then also the small section of that eight point eight acres there. You can kind of see that it already is being farmed similar, uh, so it'd be like the waterway, like that's the pond, but the south corner, you can kind of see the line where the waterway is right now where they've hate it. Um, that will be a waterway, and that would be the only thing that might come to us as a cost. Right? I think, did he have that in his email? Nate, I never got to look at it, but he, so the waterway work is going to be done on a cost share through the county for the work outside, like in the county property. Um, but uh because of our lease situation, in the sense that we want to be able to terminate it if there's development, he's not going to use the cost share, but he was like, well, maybe they'll just do it, maybe there'll be a cost, and I was like, well, you can't just leave it out there, open like that. Um, and so I said, give me, give me a number, and he said between a thousand and three thousand was what he thought would be. And he said that would be high, you would expect to be much more much smaller than that, and it's like literally just that like tail end of that, yeah, right there. Um, so for what it's worth, uh, the rest of it was just like contour, like you said, the um surveying for the markers for the farmer, and in the waterway, they're just like making sure that they're haying it and not planting in it.
And that conversation about the one thousand or three thousand dollars, Sarah, isn't necessarily a conversation tonight. It's more of a FYI of what may be coming.
Well, yeah, because I was like, so what's it gonna, what, what's our stake in it? Because we've had situations before with the business park when we developed it, where we found out the waterways were actually in a conservation program. So that we had to deal with that, and so that's what I wanted to make sure that we didn't end up like tying ourselves into a conservation program that didn't allow development. So that's how that came up, was figuring out how it was going to be paid for.
Yeah, so there might, there might be some, some fiddling uh along the way, and, and as this develops, there may be some more opportunities for the collaboration. One of my concerns was, you know, is any of our land need to be reduced because of, of this? And I've asked that question multiple times, and they've just kind of integrated this map in it as is. And what I've always said is if somebody feels like the land is not that much acreage because of the conservation practices, then that person will just have to adjust their bid accordingly, and that all these items on there are approximate acreage anyway, so. Is it perfect yet? No, but I, do I think it's solid enough for us to move forward on and, and give it a try for the next four years? I, I think so, so.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? No, not all those favors say aye?
Aye, aye.
Posted? All right, thank you. Um, item number ten, review and approval of transportation project plat for temporary limited easements and fees for Main Street tap project. And this looks like it's under the Plan Commission and Public Works.
Okay, I'm going to try to be more concise than I have been at the Plan Commission and the Public Works, but if you feel like you wanted more information, just let me know. Um, so this is a two-part approval process. One is that we need um the transportation plat approved from Plan Commission, which is a new concept for me, because I know plats, but typically, you know, you're solidifying things that are happening already. This is actually, needs to be approved in advance of the um right-of-way professionals that deal with the right-of-way easements. Before they approach the landowners, this already has to be on record at the county. So that's why it's called a transportation plat, and it's happening in advance of all of this happening. And I think if you look at the appraisal report, I think it was on the, in the appraisal report, if I remember correctly, if you scrolled, uh, yeah, somewhere in, if you go, I think you want to go up. It was like right at the beginning. There you go. So you're, it's just like a very large map, but if you zoom out, I think, you should be able to see it a little bit better. Maybe it's just the front part. Okay, so we've got the Main Street project for next year, that would be in the downtown area. And um, the DOT is very particular about how they work on properties. So where in our projects, we're a little more, you know, just talking to property owners. Everything has to be completely set in an official easement. Um, so there's sixteen properties that are a part of it. They're all in the corners of the intersections of Main Street and Court, Jefferson and Tarhune and South Street. Of all of those, twelve of them are very straightforward. It's um often in the downtown because there's paving that goes all the way up to the buildings. We're going to be taking out concrete, and some of that concrete is on private property, right? It's not in our right-of-way, but we're changing the grades of the sidewalk to meet ADA compliance. And in doing so, that'll change the grades slightly towards the buildings, and so we're touching them. They need what's called a temporary limited easement. If you remember, we set um a minimum offer price of three hundred dollars, and then all those situations, I'll get there. Right away, that's what ends up happening. There's just not enough area, and the value of it isn't that high. The area that gets more complicated is at South Street. We're installing the traffic signal there. And we're also lucky us cleaning up um parts of the easements that were never required by the DOT when they put the sidewalks in, in the first place. There's actually two things happening. Sorry, Nate, I thought that it was in there. Currently, it's not. Um, in any case, uh, most of what is there is just the temporary easements again and grading, but there are small portions, and if you go to the um what is it called up there? Is that what it is? Yeah. On the plat, it will have um these sixteen locations, parcels, and what um will be offered to them. So that's part of what you're approving. So one is the plat, and if you need it up there, Nate, I could try to find it. Um, it would be in the public.
It was in the original packet, if you want to find.
Okay, awesome. Sorry, thank you. Um, so part of it is approving the plat, and the other part of it is approving the fees. Let's see, how good of a, I think that is where I there's the, it's the plat, it's no aerial photo, so it's very hard to see, and right now it's, north is facing down. Um, but this is essentially Main Street, and so that this plat is, like I said, that transportation plat, all of the intersections, and you can see these like really tiny parts of the parcels right there. So like you're like dotted, hatching there is like that corner, like by the Fortney, for example, there. This is not their property, well, it is their property, but it's um concrete beside their buildings. But if you go all the way down to South Street, because all of the intersections are virtually the same except for South Street, um, you'll see that there, it's a little more complicated. So, um, yep, that one right there, thank you. So again, this map isn't lovely because it's so it's flat, excuse me, it's so, you have to zoom in so far, but there is a certain area, the greater, bigger areas that are dotted hatch, whereas the ones that are crosshatched or like diagonal hatch, that's the actual purchase that we're going to be making. And like I said, some of this is just cleaning up sidewalk that was never on the right-of-way. So the, one, the plat needs to be approved, two, the fees need to be approved, and like I mentioned, one through four, so that South Street intersection has um some more than our minimum amount, so people are being offered the value of the land based on the appraisal report. And then the temporary limited easement amount, and then they rounds it up. So instead of having five hundred and ninety-three dollars, it's six hundred. And then the rest, the remaining parcels are all that three hundred dollar minimum because they just don't add up too much. So all in total, it's sixty-one hundred of property easement purchase acquisition, which falls in line with what we expected in the project, so. So all of these folks will be approached after with this as their offers for the easements. Happy to answer any questions.
Miss Cindy, I'll make a motion to approve the transportation project plat for temporary limited easements and fees for Main Street tap.
This is Todd, a second.
All right, got a motion in a second. Is it okay to put them as one, or do you need two?
Well, I don't know, it, as long as it's the plat can go to the county, that's what it needs to be able to be registered. Okay. Thank you.
So if you want to revise that.
Approval of transportation project plat for temporary limited easements for Main Street tap.
Todd, a second. All right, motion in a second. Any other questions? That doesn't have to be, yeah, all right, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Posted? All right. No.
And then we'll have to do one for the fee.
Right.
I'm going to get to it again. Um, I make a motion to approve the transportation project plat for fees for Main Street tap.
All right, got a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
David?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Todd Kirking?
Aye.
Todd Spath?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Crystal?
Aye.
And Steve?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, moving to item number eleven, discussion with possible action on budget and financing for the Verroco Fire Station project.
Folks, what you can see on the screen here is the um fire station budget. So this had gone through uh Public Safety last week. Um, chief's here in the back, so if we want to bring them up, we can bring them up and have the conversation as well, but I'll kind of walk everybody through where we're at. So back in August, we looked at this budget for the purposes of submitting it to the USDA as part of the USDA application. Uh, five point two five million dollars is available in grant monies uh through that, and we have it secure as long as we work through the project. As part of that project budget, we were saying that the overall project was going to cost about eight point five nine five. But if you remember that conversation, we purposely were lowballing it to ensure that we weren't leaving any grant money on the table. In reality, we sort of got the feeling that the project cost was hovering somewhere between nine point two, nine point five to ten million dollars. Um, and so obviously, since that point, a lot of additional work has been done, and um we're going, going ahead and, and walk through the budget today. So if you look over here, twelve four is when it was reviewed at um at Public Safety, and as far as I can tell right now, the project budget is just a hair under ten million dollars. And in order to make this happen, we need to bring in sufficient project revenue in order to cover those costs. So number one, the city share it at three point three zero eight is what we're projecting. Plus the cost of interim financing, which is thirty-four thousand two eighty-one. Now that interim financing is a projection, and it could change uh based on a number of variables, uh interim interest rates, um, how long we're holding on to principal and how big that principal is. So are we holding on to two million dollars for four months, or are we holding, ever holding on to five hundred thousand for a month at a time, right? It just really depends on how quickly pay requests come through, how quickly the USDA reimburses for those pay requests, how quickly we bring in some of our other revenue sources. But all day, um, this is what this current budget is projecting as far as the city's contribution to the project, three point three four two million. And just as a reference, the city hall project cost about two point six seven three million on the city that, you know, after the grant was taken out, and then uh the police department, I think, was around like two point six, if I remember correctly, and I pull those numbers up again. Um, the key addition here is the additional revenue sources. So you'll see here, the USDA grant to the congressally directed spending is five point two million. The townships, and Justin can maybe speak to this a little bit, um, have, we've been in conversation with the townships. Um, an ask has been made to them collectively for nine hundred thousand dollars, three hundred apiece to the three of them, Jefferson, Franklin, and Veropa. Um, and they still have some approvals they need um to go through. Um, they have to go through their own uh financing um sort of process to figure out where the money's going to come from, whether they're going to bond for, whether they have any cash, et cetera. But right now, I would say there's some amount of soft commitment or soft interest, if we can call it, um, but certainly before the project goes um and a bid is accepted, we're going to need hard commitments. Fair enough, Justin, anything you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, that's pretty, pretty much accurate. We had um, the chief and I had sat down with the three townships and talked about the ask, and uh that they were all understood that at some point we were going to come with what, whether that was an increase in rent or whether that, you know, what. They knew that something was coming, so we talked.
They knew that something was coming. So we talked about it. And I specifically asked them if they felt that it was, was reasonable or if I was being unreasonable by asking that. They all agreed that it wasn't unreasonable. But they all also agreed that they've got to figure out how to make it work. So we left the meeting with them working on their end to figure out how are they going to, you know, how are they going to put it together? Um, I've spoke, had just brief conversations with the three of them in the last couple of weeks and they're still working through the process there. To Nate's point, they, they'd agreed that they'll work on getting us that money. Um, none of them had agreed to had. We haven't signed any contracts or received any checks yet. So, um, they have the same types of challenges we do budgetarily. So they're, they're working their angles too. So.
So when you look at this budget, especially compared to where it was when we approved the USDA portion. I think the first thing to note here is that the contributions be on both are almost exactly the same. Even though the project costs are considerably higher with the additional revenue, our contributions as a city land exactly where we would hope they'd land when the USDA application was approved. And there's a far better cry from where we were thinking we'd be at without that money, which is probably closer to this 4.7 million number. Um, what is, does anybody have any questions on this sheet before I move on? Okay. What I showed next at Public Safety is what is the impact to the city then? Um, then city taxpayer. So this is, um, an amortization schedule that shows what the, um, long-term debt will look like at projected interest rates. I'll see if I can give this a little bit better zoom. I spoke with Sean Lenz at Ellers and based on the current market, especially after there were some small drops in the federal interest rates. Um, we're looking at a per possible 4.2%. That could go sub four, um, but this is a conservative estimate. He said somewhere between, uh, 4.15 and 4.25. So I said, split the difference and that's where we'll land. 20-year bond at the borrow amount that I showed you before on the other page is looking at a quarter million dollars of interest and principal payments every year. You take that amount and you put it against the, uh, equalized value of our community. This is the change in the mill rate by bringing on the fire station, right? So the mill rate is additional tax for every $1,000 of property you own. First, or, um, real estate property. So if you own a house or a business, it's a quarter million dollars. Additional taxes that you're going to pay from the fire station, $181 a month. Year. Thank you. Per month is $15 if that helps everybody see it further. When you look at this versus the budget that we, I showed you when we did the USDA application. Here's the variance, right? So there's no variance to how we were looking at equalized value. The additional debt levy is an additional $8,500. And even though we'd be borrowing less money because the interest rates are higher. When we did this exercise back in the end of August, we were thinking the interest rates were going to be about 3.8%. And Sean had noted to us because interest rates rose, but maybe still came down a little, you're looking at better at 4.2. So because of that almost half a point interest rate higher, you're looking at a little bit additional debt levy. And so you're just looking at a hair more, um, for property taxes, um, for your property owners versus what we looked at back at the end of August. So that's taxpayer impact for everybody. The exercise we're doing here is we want everybody to get comfortable with the kind of numbers that we're talking about. And if there's concerns with where the budget is at and what the impact to the taxpayer is, it's, it would be good for us to know now. At a later date, we're obviously going to have to go through a bidding process. Um, publicly bid out the project with the help of Keller. And when the bids come in, that's when you're locking in to the expense. And that's where I said, we can't lock in to a bid until we know that all the revenues there that we need to make the project work. So by looking at this and sort of giving your blessing for this project budget tonight, it does not, it does not push us past the point of no return because we won't know that until we know both what that bid looks like and also what our long-term debt bid is going to look like. Cause again, that 4.2 number is not set in stone. It depends on what uh, regional and national banks think of the project. The last thing I'll note, I'm sorry, I skipped over this is you'll notice a $500,000 revenue from sale of the current fire station. Um, I think there was a real estate agent that was contacted and said that that building and with the property around it that we own could go for somewhere between five and $700,000. Depending on if we find the right buyer. Um, as it stands right now, this project is depending on that revenue in order to make those numbers, what you just saw. Um, I have had conversations with the Public Works Department just to make sure, um, that we've done our due diligence on that property. Um, and what I mean by that is we sure don't want to sell that property before we're absolutely sure we don't. It's not in the best interest of the city to keep it. And so, because once it's gone, it's, it's real hard to get land back, right? So, uh, we're doing some additional due diligence there. Obviously it's going to be a heavy lift to carry two buildings and, and we know all that, but we are checking to make sure. But I just want to point out that this model does include sale of that fire station, which is not something that, uh, maybe some folks assumed it, but we didn't explicitly talk about. So with that, any questions on any of the documents I've talked about? Any chief mayor, feel free to add.
Does that number, um, include the moving of the training tower then?
Yeah, the relocation is up there for a quarter of a million.
Okay.
All right. Other questions?
The 900,000 or do the townships pay a monthly, um, or annual rent type fee that you were talking about? They, they do.
Currently they do and the chief can.
So would this be in lieu of, uh, rent for the next how many years or something like that? Is that kind of what we're creating the rent for this?
Yep. So the initial concept is, is that, that, um, their $300,000 injections or whatever to build this. They'd essentially go rent free for 20 years. So the life of the, the loan for us or whatever, um. Beyond that though, we did talk about utilities and so on and so forth, that that would have to be looked at too. Um, and of course those are unknowns at this point, but that was discussed with them and, and they understood that.
As a reference on the rent, it's approximately 13, 12 to 13,000 a year.
Currently, yes. Yep.
Total. So it's not a huge amount and you know, we've always, I think, been really, I won't say generous, but we've always made it an easy pill to swallow in terms of rent and that we haven't often adjusted it throughout 15, 20 years. I think in the last three years that I've been here is when we've seen a couple hundred dollars added to the rent. But I think between the rent, the loss in rent, but that add to utilities, it should, from an operational standpoint, point wash out really well. And I think it works out really nicely for the townships as well, because being able to have facilities for their communities with a $300,000 contribution is, is a great opportunity for them as well. But of course they're going to have to figure out how to make that, that work. Just it's not an easy lift for them either. So. Did I cut you off? Did you have anything you want to add?
Is that me? Sir, is the public works thinking about moving up by the fire station?
And we'll just have to be mindful about not to go too far down that rabbit. No, you can come, but we just can't go too far down that rabbit hole per the agenda, Lori. No, no, it's okay. Just.
It certainly wouldn't be big enough for the entirety of public works. But it's also a really awesome location considering the other possibilities that we have. So.
Other questions? Anything? No. So what we're looking for tonight is just basically like earlier. Probably act, take action to acknowledge that this is what in fact we're working towards and understanding that this is where we're at.
I guess you, you're pretty confident that the towns, townships are going to come up with this year?
I mean, they, they seemed, if you can use the word positive, um, understanding when we had that meeting and mayors talked to them since and they are working on it. And their intent is to try and do what they can and be a part of it. I see Baron, one of, one of our town, town of Franklin is online tonight and I know he was at the, uh, public safety meeting where this was talked about online also. So they're, and they're listening and that, I mean, if it comes down to a point where they say they can't or won't do it, we'll be back because it's very dependent on their contributions. I mean, it's, you see the impact with, with it. Without it, it's significant. If you look at Nate's, um, just that little extra interest, that $8,000 made an impact. So if, if they can't do that, I mean, it's a significant change in the levy and, and all of the things. So.
I think we also have to keep in mind that to provide the service, not just this building, but to provide the service, we need them and they need us. The two halves fit together to get, they will enable us to do what we have to do.
And we, we've talked, I've talked with the chairman, eh, well not, they're not all chairman. I don't know if Howard, I think, uh, Howard's not, but couple of the chairman and then one of the members, and we've talked a lot about partnerships and you know, historically they've paid a very small amount. Um, they own the, they own more trucks in that station than the city does, you know? So it's, it's a unique arrangement. Um, so they have large investment vehicles. And it's a really good, the city benefits by having them and then the city trucks, of course, are available to them. So there's benefit to that. And the talk about this bigger ask, it helps. Or we talked more about collaboration, like being more active participants with each other more so than we have in the past, which they, they're very interested in that. So it's a good, I think it's a good step in the right direction to have a more collaborative, you know, a, a better working, or I don't want to say better because it's not bad. Um, they have more of a seat at the table this way. And I think it, they, they like that. Am I hitting that right, chief? Well, you're spot on. I think it's a, it's more of a collaborative effort and, uh, it's a more of a partnership. And, uh, they do provide a lot. We both need each other. You know, we, neither side could do this without the other. And, uh, this is a way to bring them in more and, and have that bigger partnership. And I think part of the struggle with them, if you look at what the townships, how their budgets typically work, you know, the majority of their budgets are roads related, right? The townships don't have a ton of, Lori knows better than anybody. So for them to shift from, you know, their budget, which has always been historically that to looking at having this much of an, of an investment into a project like this is just different than what they're used to dealing with. And that's kind of why it's taken some time for them to, to kind of walk into how does it work for them? So we want to be respectful of their, you know, time and understand that they need some time, but you know.
How many townships? Jefferson, Verocua, Franklin?
Yep. Three. Anything else? No? Now we'd look for some form of action.
I would move we approve this financing plan. That's that. What you need Nate? Okay.
Steve, all second.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Andrew.
Aye.
Todd Kirking.
Aye.
Todd Spade.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Crystal.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
And David.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Is it, we've been at this for about an hour and 45 minutes. Is everybody good keeping going or would a break be in order? I know we're getting close to the end, so I'm trying. All right. We'll keep her roll on it. Item number 12, discussion with possible action on transfer of property located at 321 Southeast Avenue. To a parcel number 28601718-0000 from Vernon County to the city of Verocua.
Okay, this went to public property, um, last week. This is the actual old hospital property that, uh, we took down, um, I can't remember what the year was on that, but we actually had a special assessment put on this property of $61,370.66. Um, since that time, the owner had passed away and it went to his daughter who contacted the county and asked if they would basically forgive the taxes and the special assessment, and they wanted us to do that as well. Since we have this significant, um, investment in this. It ended up that the, the daughter donated this property to the county. Since then, the county has taken the taxes off of it and then they've asked if the city was interested in it because we have this investment in it. The value of the property is nowhere near the $61,000, but the thought process behind this would be if the, is in the city's control, we can kind of mold it to however the city would want to do and what to do with that property. Uh, at public property, we did have an adjoining, um, property owner, um, say that they had some interest in part of the property. So I mean, there's, there's, there's options available there, but, um, in the meantime, the county was going to take this to the county board and make it a formal action, but I wanted you guys to be aware of it in case for some reason you guys were against doing this, but any, uh, the public property committee felt that it was a probably a good thing for the city to have control over this. To maybe possibly get some money back out of this with increased tax base and housing and however the development is rather than just a having it as an open area. So.
Is it zoned residential?
Okay. Yes.
So questions, you just like a.
We just need to have a formal motion saying that we'll take it.
Yeah.
Where, where is the property exactly?
That's Southeast Avenue.
Old hospital.
You know where Raleigh Hill used to live down on there? Okay. Just go north and then across the street. It's empty lot now.
They took it down.
Kitty corner for Raleigh Hill used to live to the north, across the street.
Okay.
My Wistonburgs.
On the 300 block there.
Okay. So it's a fairly nice sized lot.
Yeah. And if we were to sell it, we'd want to sell it as a whole lot, I believe. You get the best value out of it.
Well, Lori, Lori talked about it and I, I guessing that's what Nate's going to talk about. The city having control of it gives the opportunity to work with somebody to, maybe it could be a duplex or maybe it could be, you know what I mean? It gives us the opportunity to vet the project that's going to go on there to make sure it's the best use of the property.
I agree. Probably off agenda.
No, that's.
No, that's the reasoning.
No, that's, that's great. That's on agendas.
Oh, good.
Is the next steps would be, once we get control of the property, we would do some sort of RFP process so that the public in general can throw out their ideas. And then a private developer would build.
Yep.
There was a, there was a lot, two blocks to the east of me that got sold here. Abra, Aba, Aberg, I think sold that lot. And he got the 40,000, I think for that lot.
Yeah. And this is all cleaned up. And they took out, I mean, they took the basement and everything right out of it, right, chief? I, I believe they did. So it's ready for development.
I was just going to mention that a couple came that day to public property and said that they would like a little strip of land, whatever it's is behind their house. I'm not sure exactly which house they have. Remember that? For garden or something, just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, I, 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 well, whatever proposals come forward, we'll sort of bring that to the group and make recommendations. And again, the goal is, I think, highest and best use. Um, first city's goals of housing as well as tax base would probably be what we're looking for.
I'll make a motion that I transfer the property located at 321 Southeast Avenue from Vernon County to City of Verocua.
David, I'll say it.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Post. All right. Item number 13, review and approval of election worker listing for 2024, 2025.
Okay. The listing that I have up there is for the next two years. I have to do this every two years. Um, these are the current ones that I have been using. Um, some of them are new from the last listing. I actually have two chief inspectors, just because if one happens to get sick on the day of an election, I have a backup plan. And so usually they kind of work a split shift, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. So that kind of, um, evens it out. So they don't feel like they're completely responsible for the whole day. But, um, if you have anybody that you feel you want to add to this, um, listing, there's only one person on there. there's only one person on there that is on a registered Republican list that they sent me. Um, the Democratic Party did not send me a list this year, but some of those that were on last year, I did use most of them that were on there. So I left them on there. They're, they were wonderful um new additions. So I've worked with every one of these people and I feel that they all want to, to do it again. So at least I hope they do. I didn't get a chance to talk to everybody, but.
You want a motion to approve the list?
Yes, please.
We have that. Hi, David.
Steve, a second.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number fourteen, discussion with possible action on park tractor replacement for twenty twenty four, come park and rec.
Uh, so yeah, this is the four by four Kubota that we're looking to replace in twenty twenty four. I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention right now because we currently um have the Kubota ready um for snow minus the cab. We're taking a chance. We want to move on this as quickly, quickly as we can come January. Um, got quotes from Portland and Homesteaders in New Richmond or not New Richmond, Richland Center. Um, um, two Kubota companies, again, because we have a current Kubota and we have all the attachments for the Kubota. So to make it ideal to go to John Deere when we have everything for Kubota. Um, as you can see, both of them are, I just, I actually, these were the rates from a week ago. I talked with um Portland Implement from our Park and Rec Board. They wanted to see if he would come down to the Homesteaders price and he agreed to that. So both of the prices are technically the same. Um, we decided we wanted to stay with Portland just because of the customer service and the years of working with them. Um, so I would hope that you guys could approve this tonight so I can reach out to them and get, get the tractor in January for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty four year.
Thanks, Ken.
Todd, I approve the purchase of the tractor for the parking wreck department.
It's Todd, I'll say it again. You want from where in the motion?
From, from Portland Implement. There you go.
Still good?
I'll say that.
Any discussion?
We talked about asking if we could get what a hundred and fifteen dollars off or something. Did you say that?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Never mind.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Todd Kirkking.
Hi.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
And Andrew.
Hi.
All right. Um, item number fifteen, discussion and action on canceling the December twenty sixth, twenty twenty three council meeting. Based on the fact that it's the day after Christmas.
Well, it's the day after Christmas and because of where.
And city hall is closed.
City hall is, it's actually a staff holiday, so it's going to be.
We.
Well, it would just be more expensive to run the meeting. It'd be some sort of holiday.
Would we make it up another night or just cancel it altogether then?
I think typically if we can help it, we try to cancel the last meeting in the year just because.
Okay.
It's, it's hard to get councils, hard to get staff.
Yeah. And then usually at the end, we usually have the finance chair come in and approve all of the bills and then you guys would still get all that stuff come to you. And if you had questions, you could, you know, let us know. But otherwise it's typically the, for, because we have to get all the bills in at the end of the year. Um, so Crystal would be the one that would have to come in and sign off on that. So.
Steve, I'll make a motion to cancel the last meeting of the month for council.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right. Item number sixteen, payment of the bills.
I didn't know if you wanted to say anything. I just wanted to point out that I am spending a lot of money. So if you have any questions this time, we have a lot of the debt payments that are due here in December. So that very last page under the, the payments of the loans, the twenty thirteen capital expenditures, it's a final payment on that. So the next few years, each year, one of those is going to fall off. So there were ten year notes and so we have to pay each one of them every year in December. So pretty soon we'll be having some tax money coming in to help offset that. So. I make a motion, repay the bills.
All right. Is there a second?
Todd, I'll say it.
All right. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Todd Spade.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Crystal.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
And Todd Kirkking.
All right. All right. Uh, item number seventeen, second period of public comment. I see we do not have any in-house. Is there anybody online that would like to make a public comment?
Got a couple of folks online. Anybody online wants to make public comment? They can do so at this time.
All right. Not hearing any. I would take a motion to adjourn. David, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Did you get that? Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right. Opposed?